Get this show on the road.
Yes, ma'am.
All the meeting to order.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Hewer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Powers.
Here.
Do you have anything to report back, Kimberly, from closed session?
No, there's no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. Where am I? Okay, we'll have the silent prayer and the flag salute. Councilmember Hewer, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, April 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, April 8th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Okay, council, any agenda approval additions and/or deletions? Nope. Okay, moving along to the presentation, the Sacramento-Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District Annual Report.
Perfect. Great. All right. All right, well, I wanted to say, my name's Gary Goodman. I'm the district manager for the Sacramento-Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District. I want to thank the city council for inviting me out to come talk a little bit about nobody's favorite topic, mosquitoes, but to give you an idea as to what we're anticipating for this upcoming season. So our district covers both Sacramento and Yolo County. Our main office is in Elk Grove, and then we have a satellite office in Woodland that covers operations for Yolo County as a whole. We work very closely with our surrounding districts, and especially here in Galt. Just on the other side here is San Joaquin County, and we work very closely with them in terms of their surveillance and those types of things. And within the state of California, there's about 58 mosquito vector control districts that essentially cover where anybody lives to make sure that we're trying to protect people from mosquito-borne diseases such as West Nile and then, of course, the new threats that are starting to come through, things like Zika. And our district is very diverse. Sacramento County is very diverse. We've got the Delta Islands with a lot of water, agriculture type there. We've got in Yolo County quite a bit of rice application. So we've got, with rice, you've got standing water breeds a lot of mosquitoes. And then, of course, you have these communities specifically like Galt that's kind of surrounded by agriculture where those mosquitoes tend to come into town. And so we want to make sure that we're doing our appropriate outreach and protecting the folks from the diseases that we see. So some mosquito habitats are very easy for us to spot. You drive along the road, you can drive along here 99, you can see the agricultural areas, you can see rice fields, you can see wetlands, stone lakes, or those types of areas, CRP right here, that you can see the standing water and this type of vegetation makes it very simple for us to be able to try and spot these. And then, of course, we can treat these appropriately to try to help reduce mosquito populations. But some of the issues that become a challenge for us are some of the backyard sources because it's very difficult to see in someone's backyard, beyond the fence, on the other side of the house. And especially with all the recent rains that we've had, a lot of these little containers that are kind of cryptic in people's backyards tend to fill up with a little bit of water, and they can produce quite a bit of mosquitoes. So some of the big ones that we've been challenged with over the past few years are the green swimming pools, unmaintained swimming pools can breed thousands of mosquitoes. But even just that small bucket or a dog dish that's kind of left along the side with this rain, especially the one that's coming this week, at the end of the week, can fill up those little containers and breed mosquitoes. So we always ask people to try to make sure they're going around their yard about once a week or so and just looking for anything that's holding water and just making sure you're dumping it out. So our district essentially approaches mosquito prevention in a number of different steps. The first one's public information. We go out to a lot of fairs, a lot of neighborhood association groups. We have a school program. We have an active advertising program with radio, television, and print, just trying to make sure that people are aware of what the risks are associated with mosquitoes and how they, what they can do to try to protect themselves. Then we go through our surveillance program, which essentially is we set traps out throughout our district and pick them up essentially on a daily basis. And we monitor those traps for the different species of mosquitoes. So worldwide, there are about 3,500 different species of mosquitoes. Here in Sacramento and Yolo County, we have a little over 20. Not all mosquitoes transmit disease, but we're monitoring those levels to see if we're seeing an increase in a particular area or a decrease, or of course, if we're seeing any virus activity in either the bird population or in the mosquito population. Then we go into our biological control program. So we breed at our facility in Elk Grove. We breed mosquito fish, the little fish that are there on the picture. They're about two inches long, look like guppies. They do a great job of controlling mosquitoes in those kind of larval water sources. We plant about 4,000 pounds of fish per year in Sacramento and Yolo County. We're the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. Then we go through what we call our physical control program. So we have a backhoe and a dump truck and some heavy equipment, and we actually work with landowners on making sure that they can maintain their property. If they've got a ditch that gets clogged with weeds and with bushberries and things like that, we'll help them kind of clear that out so the water will move forward and it doesn't back up onto the property creating essentially mosquito habitat. But we work with US Fish and Wildlife, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, other landowners that may have a problem on their property to make sure that they can facilitate and manage the water on their property appropriately. And then we get into our control program, which is the larvicide and adulticide. So larvicide is trying to find those water sources where mosquitoes are breeding, whether it be in the irrigation ditch, whether it be a wetland, whether it be a rice field, or whether it be in someone's backyard. So we go out and we have products that we put in that water that are very specific to just mosquito larvae, and that's what our activities are being done Monday through Friday all day long. When we do start to see an increase in adult mosquito activity, and specifically when we start to see an increase in virus activity in adult mosquitoes, that's when we'll start to do our adult mosquito control program, which includes ground rigs, whether it be backpack or ATV or truck, all the way up to aerial applications. Actually, Galt has been relatively lucky in terms of West Nile virus activity to date. We've never had to do aerial applications over Galt. We have done a number of truck applications in and around the area to try to help reduce the abundance of mosquitoes and, of course, any virus activity. So in general, what diseases do mosquitoes carry? Well, West Nile virus is the most concerning one that we have. It's in our area. It's been established here in Sacramento and Yolo County since 2004, and it's not going to go away. We have cases every single year. We're going to have multiple cases every year, and so we want to make sure that people are aware of what those risks are and what they can do to prevent themselves. But mosquitoes also transmit diseases like dengue, malaria, chikungunya. Zika has obviously been in news very recently in the last couple of years. And then at this time of year is dog heartworm. So especially in the springtime, the particular mosquito species breeds in tree holes. So those little holes that in trees that fill up with all this rainwater, there's a specific type of mosquito that targets those areas, and those are the mosquitoes that transmit dog heartworm in the springtime. So you want to make sure that your dog has the appropriate heartworm medication that's out there on the shelves, but it can do that. And the risk tends to go down as the weather starts to warm up, and essentially those tree holes dry up. So West Nile virus activity in California. So based on the chart, kind of charted this from about 2005, and you can see that was the big introduction to California. We had almost, or over 800 cases of human cases that were there. And then we started to see a pretty steady decline over the next few years. And then, of course, in 2014, with really the beginning of the drought, we saw a huge increase in cases of going from 372 to over 800 cases. And then 2015 was almost 800, and then last year it dropped off quite a bit, but still quite a number of cases that were there. We anticipate, or we thought, that the increase in cases during the drought is a bit counterintuitive. You would think, well, if you have less mosquitoes, right, you've got less water, you'll have less mosquitoes, you'll have less virus. But what happens is because West Nile is a bird disease, it's carried by birds and vectored by mosquitoes. So mosquito bites an infected bird, picks up the virus, and then bites another bird and passes it on, or bites a human and passes it on. So now, when you have a drought, wherever you do have water, you have a congregation of both birds and mosquitoes in the same place. And what happened, it tended to amplify the virus, and that's what we saw during those last two years. Hopefully, with the amount of rain that we've got here, it'll be a bigger challenge for us in terms of abundance of mosquitoes, but we're hoping that we'll actually have less virus activity. But don't hold me to that. I can't make any guarantees. One thing I do want to try to highlight specifically with the numbers of reported cases is these are cases that actually go diagnosed. So you have to have somebody who's being, who's sick, who goes to the doctor, gets diagnosed for that. A lot of people that end up having symptoms of West Nile actually never get diagnosed. They never go to the doctor, or even the doctor, because of what the symptoms that they're experiencing are typical flu-like symptoms, the doctor is looking for supportive care, so they may not even test it. Now, the issue that we've had in the past few years is the number of what we call neuroinvasive form of the disease, which is the most serious form of West Nile fever. It starts to get into encephalitis-like symptoms and swelling of the brain, which definitely leads to hospitalization. So in the last few years, we've actually had 70% of the cases that we've had that are reported of those 800 or 763 or 442 are the neuroinvasive form actually involving hospitalizations. And so CDC estimates that for every neuroinvasive form of this disease, you actually have anywhere from 30 to 70 cases that go unreported, undiagnosed. So while the numbers look here to be less than 1,000, you're really talking about thousands of people that are being impacted by West Nile, but a lot of them just recover at home or never actually ever get diagnosed. And so we want to make sure that people understand that the risk is real and that there's simple measures that they can take to try to prevent that. So here's a kind of an outline of Galt, the city specifically, and what we saw last year in terms of virus activity. So you can see, not that many dots and triangles, which is a good thing. Certain other areas of Sacramento County, we saw quite a bit more. So the red circles are mosquito samples, so those are mosquito collections that we had that tested positive for the virus, and then the yellow triangles are positive birds. So we greatly appreciate the public calling in when they see a dead bird, calling in. We come pick it up, and then we'll test it to see if the bird died of West Nile virus. And so in and around the Galt area, not a whole lot of activity, which is a good thing. And so that's probably credit to your folks that are being aware, making sure they're putting on repellent and not breeding mosquitoes in their yard. So what are we anticipating for this upcoming season? Obviously, there's been a ton of water. Everywhere you look, there's standing water. Obviously, that's a concern for us at this moment. We are checking those sources and making sure that they're not breeding at the moment. We are working with San Joaquin, and I know San Joaquin's had a levy break down, down south, and so they're starting to see quite a bit of backup and they're seeing some production. And so they're starting to do some treatments a little bit earlier than they normally have. We're monitoring our areas. We've done some small treatments, but nothing significant like what we've seen in San Joaquin, and we'll continue to work with them to make sure that the folks here are protected as well. So obviously, more water is going to bring more mosquito populations. What we hope, again, is that we have a little bit of a balance with abundance and virus activity, and that's the biggest concern that we have. So one other thing I wanted to talk about, over the past couple of years, we've started to see in California what we call these invasive mosquito species. So specifically, the Asian tiger mosquito and the yellow fever mosquito, Aedes albopictus and Aedes aegypti, typically are mosquitoes that were never found in California. They were found in Mexico and Central America and down in South America, and they're starting to move their way up. And they have now populations that have been established in Southern California, but even as close to us as in Fresno and Madera, which is very similar climate and geography as to what we have here. And so the concern that we've got with these particular species of mosquitoes, they like people, and then they like very, they don't fly very far, but they like backyards and they like to come inside. And so they tend to travel in what we call small containers. So anything like those sources that are in your backyard, that's where they're going to try to breed. And the big concern with these is these are very efficient vectors of dengue, chikungunya, and of course, Zika virus, which is the one that we're most, or has been in the news most recently. So with Zika, just a little bit of background information, it was discovered first in 1947 in Uganda. Similarly, West Nile virus was discovered in Uganda in 1937, 10 years prior. And so we've had cases throughout the United States reported of Zika. Now luckily for us, no local transmission. So Zika, like West Nile virus I mentioned, is a bird disease, carried by birds, transmitted by mosquitoes. Zika, the host, are people. So if you have somebody that travels to an infected area, gets Zika, gets bitten by an infected mosquito, and then comes back here, and then gets bit by one of those invasive species of mosquitoes, then you can have what we call local transmission. So there has been some local transmission in Florida. I'm sure everybody saw what was going on in Miami last year with the amount of Zika activity that we've had. And in Southern California, we have had a number of cases, but no local transmission at this moment in time. But obviously, the big concern with Zika is the impact on babies and the birth defects that are coming through. And so we have had microcephaly babies born in the United States from Zika. So obviously, that's a big concern for us, and we want people to be aware of that. So what do we ask people to do? So we have what we call seven Ds. If you can follow the seven Ds, we can help reduce the risk, reduce the amount of mosquitoes that are going to be out there, and then reduce your risk for virus transmission. The first one's drain standing water. Again, we try to ask folks, you know, go around your yard once a week, dump out any standing water that you may see. If you know somebody who has a bad swimming pool, give us a call, we'll come out and take a look at it. If you see standing water, give us a call. That's our job. So it's always nice to have eyes and ears outside of our own that are out there. And obviously, with the amount of virus activity that this community's had, we get a lot of number of service calls and public participation from that. Dawn and dusk are times to avoid being outdoors. So this is when mosquitoes tend to be most active. They're looking for that blood meal, so if only the female mosquito bites, males don't bite, they just feed on nectar. So only female mosquitoes bite, and essentially, they're looking for that protein in your blood so they can lay their eggs. So if you can avoid being outdoors during dawn and dusk, that's when mosquitoes are going to be most active, and that's when your highest risk of transmission of getting bitten is going to be. If you do have to go outside, dress in long sleeves and long pants. I'm a redhead, so I've got to wear long sleeves and long pants all the time. But if you do have to go outside, make sure that your skin isn't exposed. If your skin's not exposed, then the mosquitoes can't get to you. But if you can't do that, defend yourself with an effective repellent. We buy this stuff by the pallet, so we want it to be used. I brought in 12 boxes today, so you guys have over 1,500 mosquito repellent packets. These are really good. You can throw them in your purse, throw them in your car, wherever you may have it, your backpack, and we make them available for anybody at any time. So if you have any public events, you want some of this information, be more than happy to drop it off or arrange for pickup. So we have some other information as well. But it's a very good use to be able to try to make sure that you're not going to be bitten by mosquitoes. Then the other thing, doors and screens. So I know in the summertime, we always try to open up the windows, bring in the delta breezes to cool the house off. You want to make sure that your doors and screens are in good working order. Mosquitoes are pretty small, and essentially what they're doing is they're picking up the carbon dioxide that you exhale, especially if you're a big snorer. Then they're going to pick that up, and mosquitoes will find their way in through those small holes in the doors and screens. And so you want to make sure that they're in good working order so the mosquitoes can't get you while you're sleeping. And then the last D really is district personnel are here to help. So if you've got an issue, you see mosquitoes, you're having a problem with mosquitoes, you've got a bad, you know, of a bad pool in the neighborhood, anything, give us a call. Typically, we can mobilize people either that day or get them out the very next day. So we understand the earlier that we can try to take care of the problem, the better off we all will be in the long run. So give us a call. We want to make sure we're here to help. So we have our phone number, 1-800-429-1022, or you can visit, and we have more information on our website at fightthebite.net. And with that, does the council have any questions?
No, but I want to thank you because you always do a great presentation, and we're always happy to have you back once a year.
Yes, thank you very much.
So like our Dead Man's Gulch area that runs through town, do you guys monitor that and spray it?
Absolutely. Yeah, we have a technician that has Galt and kind of the greater area, and every day, he's out here taking a look, driving around, making a look for sources. We do what we call service requests, so when somebody calls the district, then we go out to that property. But essentially, his job is to, we have already kind of documented sources. So we've been around a while. We've been around for 75 years, so we've got, we kind of know some of the areas that are going to produce mosquitoes, and that's his job. He knows this area, and he goes out and monitors that and tries to make a turnaround essentially once a week, because that's kind of the life cycle of mosquitoes, from the time that they lay their eggs to when they emerge as adults. So he tries to make sure that he's getting around and doing that. But yes, Dead Man's Gulch is very, very popular with us.
So if there's an area we want looked at, we just call?
All you have to do is give us a call, and we'll make sure that we'll go out there. If you leave a phone number, we'll call you and let you know exactly what it is that we did. If we do a service request on a particular property, you can either be home and we can meet you, or you can give us access, and we'll leave a door hanger, let you know exactly what we did in the yard, whether it be treating the pool or dumped out some standing water or whatever those things may be, just to make sure that the resident understands what it is that we're doing.
Yeah, I was just more concerned about the standing water. Last summer, there was areas where the water was just stagnant, and you could just see it.
Yeah. A lot of those areas, especially if the water's not going to go anywhere, we'll plant fish, and then the technician will come back to make sure that the fish are doing the job. So a lot of times, you see standing water, we see it too, and we'll be checking it to make sure it's not breeding mosquitoes.
Okay. And you're having an open house on April 17?
We are having an open house for elected officials on April 17, which is the beginning of Mosquito and West Nile Virus Awareness Week in California. You're more than welcome to come to our facility. We'll give some presentations, and we have, we'll get more in-depth and all the fun stuff associated with mosquitoes. It's a lot more, it's a lot more fun than we, than you might think it might be.
So I plan to attempt.
And we'll put you, we'll put you in the cage, we'll put you in the cage with all the mosquitoes and see how long you can last.
Yeah, right.
Maybe not.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Where is the repellent? That just makes me itch. Where'd he put it?
Okay, Donna, could you please read the public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to the issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Thank you. We have Al Baldwin.
I wasn't sure if that was a question or not. Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, a city of character in the best way. I have a reminder here for you tonight. This is amazing. It's going to be wonderful. You ever thought of going to Italy? You know that country way over there? Well, what you do is go over there and you look at everything, and it's so nice, but the main thing you want to do is to get something to eat while you're over there. But how do you find what's good, what's not so good? Well, let me tell you something. This Saturday night, and this is April 8th, we're going to have an evening in Italy, and it's put on by the Galt Area Historical Society, and it will have some honoring of Jeanne Olson, which started this society, and also an evening in Italy many, many years ago. So I think you're going to have a great time if you can get to it. It's, the food is going to be prepared by one of the most, I guess, favorite chefs in Galt, and maybe you haven't heard about it, but she can really cook. It's just Lucia. And it, she's going to open up a restaurant, by the way, in Galt. I don't know if you know that either. This is one way to test it out and see, but never doubt that this is Italian. It's at the best. It's going to be at the Littleton Center from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Now, how do you get tickets for this? Because we can't just open it up, you know, we've got to sell tickets. And it's $25 a person. It's not that much, really, for what you're going to get. You can pick it up, tickets at the Barsetti Winery on Fourth Street. It's a tasting room, and it's really good. It's 404th Street, and you can go online to galthistory.org or even Galt History, it's a historical society, and just put net or whatever, com, C-O-M, whatever you want, but you're going to get it. You're going to see the advertisement there. We're going to have raffle prizes. We're going to have people in Galt there. We're going to maybe have the council people there. We hope, we hope, we hope. And we do guarantee, it's hard, but we can guarantee there won't be any mosquitoes in there. I'm just telling you right now, we're really on guard. But you're going to have a great time if you can get there. It's going to be at the Littleton Center. And if you ever thought of going to Italy, this is the time to come and taste some of the food. And if you don't get there, you're not going to enjoy it. So it's coming up quick this Saturday night, rain or shine, because you're going to be inside with a wonderful group. And they're, I'll tell you, when you get with a wonderful group, that includes city personnel, I hope, personnel around Galt, probably the police department will have some people there because, you know, they don't just eat donuts. They want some good, solid food. And I think you're going to enjoy it if you come, but you won't enjoy it if you don't. So get over to the Littleton Center. If you have any questions, the number is 209-745-1477, and I'll see you there.
Thanks, Al. Okay, now Maria Bernal.
Hello. My name's Maria Bernal. I work for the elementary school district. This is my-
Can you pull that microphone down for me?
Sorry. This is the second time that I've been to one of these. I would just like to address that my car has been broken into this Sunday. My four tires were slashed, and I park on A. Lincoln. I've been parking there for months and months. I mean, I've been at this apartment for 10, 12-plus years. Nothing ever has happened. That was Sunday, the 26th, two, three days before that, they actually got in there, and my personal belongings were found in between the O'Hara and the funeral home, that little grassy area. That was another incident. Well, Sunday came, my tires were slashed, took me about $1,000 to repair it because the first set was $600. I had them for maybe two, three months, brand-new spanking tires. I had to spend another close to $500 to get new ones. I have a family of eight, six kids. I work two jobs for the high school as well, doing custodial in the evening. So I'm a really hard-working mom. Every penny counts to me. I would really like security around Galt. We have security in Lodi. I lived in Lodi. We have security in Galt. We have camera security in Elk Grove. Why can we not have security in Galt? Because we do have our officers that are needing help. We know we've had budget cuts, we've had to lay so many people off. If we can help these guys to help us and come together as a community, Galt would just be the little good Galt that it used to be. I had Officer Robinson come out, and she said vandalism is really high right now. Lots of my neighbors, I have gone together because we are part of the Neighborhood Watch, and about six or eight of us have had our cars slashed, have had our belongings taken, have had just broken windows, and for what? I would just really like if we can do something about it because Galt's a great place, and I want it to keep it that way. And it's been happening not just on A. Street, you know, not just on, I don't know, the different areas. You know, I work with teachers, you know, they're over there by River Oaks and all these those, and they say it's everywhere. So I don't just want it for me, myself, I want it for everybody so that we can see what's going on and maybe help our police officers, you know, give them a break because obviously, I'm not going to have them parked outside. I mean, the incident last night was at 2:45 p.m. I could not sleep. I had to be work at 7:30. I mean, it's taking a toll on me and my family. We were running out of things, you know, where to go, how we can protect ourselves, and, you know, what we can do to just feel safe. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're at, where am I? Okay, Donna, do you mind reading the information and consent calendar, please?
Minutes of the regular meeting of March 21st, 2017. Receive and file warrants for the period ending March 21st, 2017. Third Amendment to the agreement with Next Level Information Technology Incorporated to provide information technology management services and treasurer's report for period ending February 2017.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Councilmember Cruz first. Councilmember Campion, second. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Okay, now on to the Sacramento County Transient Occupancy Tax Grant Program. Applications to you, Ms. Mendez.
Yes, it's a mouthful. I apologize. And I apologize if my teeth are chattering. I've been sitting under an air vent that's making me freeze. I know better than to sit in that seat. Good evening, Mayor and members of council, Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. I am here this evening to talk about the Sacramento County Transient Occupancy Tax Grant Program, which has been really marketed as the TOT grant program through the county. As you may know, transient occupancy taxes, or TOT, is levied on guests who occupy rooms in hotels, motels, and other lodging facilities throughout California. The County Board of Supervisors recently announced a competitive grant program, which utilizes TOT as the funding source. The TOT grant program will provide up to $1 million to local government entities and nonprofit community organizations in an effort to support and enhance the cultural life and community image of the county and its residents. The grant program is intended to finance programs and projects in the areas of economic development, tourism, arts, and culture, sports facilities, parks, and community development. Important considerations of the TOT grant are that the funds must be spent within the year that they are awarded and can't be carried forward. The minimum grant request is $20,000, and the max is a total of 50% of the current year funding. So in this case, it's $500,000. Proposals that include matching funds from an outside entity will receive priority consideration. And so what staff did, Public Works, Community Development, the City Manager, as well as Parks and Recreation, we sat down and tried to determine sort of what best fit the needs for Galt, but also would be competitive in terms of the actual process through the TOT program. We rank these in order of priority. And so Priority One is the Walker Community Park Phase 1B Expansion Project. Walker Park is surrounded on three sides by county residential and agricultural properties. So the park is actually utilized by a significant number of county residents as a neighborhood park, as well as city residents. The city frequently rents the sports fields at Walker Park for regional sports tournaments, which often draw hundreds of people to Galt on any given weekend. Restaurants are busier, stores are busier, and our hotels are booked during these tournaments typically. The city and county benefit from the increase in sales tax, as well as the increase in TOT during these events. Between 2016 and 2000, between 2012 and 2016, there was an increase of 92% in the number of sports tournaments that were held in Galt, and that correlated to a 66% increase in the TOT that was collected by the city. And so these sports tournaments have a significant impact on the community in terms of the sales tax and the TOT that's collected when they are renting out the sports fields. Phase 1B of Walker Park is planned to begin construction in fiscal year 1718, so it falls within the period of time that the grant program is actually targeting. This includes the addition of two youth baseball softball fields, a restroom maintenance building, a parking lot, and the completion of the roadway through the park to Sergeant Avenue. With this expansion, our Parks Department can actually rent the facility out for softball and baseball tournaments. We're currently there only renting the facility for football and soccer tournaments. Phase 1B is estimated to cost $3.87 million, and unfortunately, park impact fees have not kept pace with the revenue estimates used to forecast available funding for the project, and so there is a shortfall. Staff is recommending that a grant application be submitted in the amount of $300,000 to the county to provide funding needed to complete the project. This provides both an economic development benefit and a tourism benefit to the surrounding region and to the community. It also relates directly to sports facilities, which was one of the identities in the actual program. The second priority project that we identified was a wayfinding signage system. I'm sure you've noticed, within the community of Galt, there are several signs throughout the main areas of the city directing people to the Galt Market, to the community development and Public Works Buildings, to the Police Department. But this really isn't a comprehensive signage system, and it's not very effective. The signs are small and many times can't be seen by actual drivers. So with the city's focus on tourism and bringing people into the community, we really thought there was a need for a comprehensive signage program to direct visitors that might be unfamiliar with Galt, but also provides the city with a really good branding opportunity. A well-designed and comprehensive signage system would project a consistent image for the community and providing a navigational system throughout the city boundaries. As part of the program, we would propose to provide signage for the county facilities as well, including McFarland Ranch, the Kasumus Preserve, and Rancho Seco Park. Staff is recommending that a grant application be submitted in the amount of $30,000 to fund a wayfinding signage system. This would encompass the design and specifications for the system, but not the fabrication and installation that would have to be funded at a later date. The third project is a tourism coordinator position. All of these projects revolve around tourism and economic development. And really, the thought process there was that the more people we bring into the community, the more they utilize our facilities. There also is going to be a sales tax impact to the city and a TOT impact. And that both affects the city and the county. So the idea with the tourism coordinator is to have a staff person dedicated to marketing our sports facilities and coordinating special events and tourism-related activities. The Parks and Recreation Department is currently not staffed to effectively handle these activities, and a tourism coordinator could solicit, schedule, and coordinate regional events such as sports tournaments, the Winterbird Festival, and city-sponsored events as well. The tourism coordinator could also coordinate private facility events, such as the Strawberry Festival and the Heritage Festival, the Extravaganza, and all the other events that we see held in the community. Staff is proposing that a grant application be submitted to the county for partial funding of a full-time position with matching funds provided by the city. We estimate a position like this would require approximately $70,000 in funding. So we would request a grant in the amount of $35,000, with the city providing matching funds. And with this application, we're recommending that the position be a pilot position, really, so that we can, within a year, determine the, the value of such a position to ensure that if the city did continue to fund the position and budget it for following years, that it was actually paying for itself and with sales tax and TOT that's generated. So the common theme, as I mentioned, is tourism and economic development with these projects, and us wanting to really highlight projects that are limited in scope and timing and can be effectively completed within a one-year period. So an increase in tourism in the community has a positive impact for the city and for the county from a fiscal aspect, but also provides a great opportunity to showcase the city as well as the county. That is all that I have, so I will entertain any questions. I have the Public Works Director and Community Development Director here to assist me with any complicated questions. And the Parks Director is, apparently those questions are going to go to the City Manager.
I have no questions.
So you're looking to council to identify which of these three projects you'd like selected for funding? Is that, is that what I'm gathering?
I think that we were actually planning on submitting three applications.
All three applications.
And, you know, these are a variety, you know, I think you have a capital project, like the sports complex, Walker Park Phase 1B, which can be completed in, you know, roughly a year. I'm looking at Public Works to-
That was the other question, whether, would we be able to expend the funds during the timeframe or the restriction that it has to be, the year it's awarded has to be expended?
Yeah, and we're not sure exactly what the cycle is. It looks like they're probably gearing up to try to award something on or about the beginning of the new fiscal year.
Okay.
And we actually have sort of 90% plans that we're, we're planning to dust off if we move forward, so we could get out to bid pretty quick. And the actual construction, if not completed, could be well underway within that year timeframe.
That's all I have. Thank you.
So with, with the wayfinding signs, it's just $30,000 to design them?
There is a, it's a comprehensive sort of package that they put together. And so they will identify what facilities should be included, private, public facilities should be included on the signage, how big they should be, what the design looks like. And I don't know if Chris wants to add anything else, but it is, it's, it's a comprehensive project that they actually put together.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll do more. They'll engage the community members, the business community, to kind of determine what's best to identify for the signage program. So, you know, you, you do get a lot for the money in addition to the locations and also the items you want located. A lot goes into the design as well. So it basically becomes a program then. With additional funding, we can then go and actually install the signs.
As well as-
Economic Task Forces, I've been thinking about this for a few years now. I bet they're just going to be tickled to have something like this come to fruition.
But the 30 grand has to have matching funds, right? So does it end up being 60 grand?
It does not.
Are you asking for 15?
No, it's, it's actually, we're requesting 30. The minimum amount is 20 for the grant application. I mean, the city could move forward and provide matching grants. We could propose that. Jeanne and I had this conversation the other day as to whether or not that would provide more weight for our application. The thought was to provide the 30,000 application, because we currently don't have funding budgeted for the wayfinding signage program, but that definitely could add weight. But 30,000 is the total amount.
Oh, so you can't, because I've seen the grant, because I was thinking about doing it myself. So you don't have to do 50%?
It's not a requirement.
That's on one of the pages for me, so, okay. Just needed to understand on that. Okay?
One question.
Mark?
Just, just to dial down a little more on the signage. Is that signage within the city, or can we actually move outside of it, like as in the 99th Quarter?
I don't know, maybe. We'd have to get, we don't have jurisdiction over that, so we would need, obviously, clearance from other bodies. But I think we've talked about doing something on the freeway separately from a wayfaring sign program, but we have identified to do something on the freeway.
Thanks, Chris.
I think there was an idea to actually provide signage to county facilities within the city limits, and then at least they're identified in terms of location.
So the City Manager and I, I'm sorry, met with Supervisor Natoli regarding, this is one of the topics that we talked about. And it's going to be a pretty competitive bid process. They're, they're really only allocating $1 million countywide. And they're looking at all sorts of organizations. So, but I think the more applications that we put in, the more chance that we'll have of- I, would really be nice if we could, I'm, Walker Park, and having that money to work on completion of it, you know, since we've got matching fun, more than matching funds to do our part would be really great. But I think staff should go forward.
And good luck, because I know how that process works.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I'll make-
Do you need a motion?
Make an emotion to approve the City Manager moving forward.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Hewer, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Pass five to zero. All right, it's to you, Emily. Utility Funds Cash Reserve Policy.
So, good evening, Mayor Powers, members of the council. Emily Boyd, Finance Director for the city. Over the course of the last year, I've been talking to you about establishing our fiscal foundation. And this is the next step in that foundation. Couple of months ago, we looked at the general fund and established a reserve for the general fund. And a reserve really is just another name. You can think of it as a savings account if you want, money that you set aside for an emergency. And the utility funds, reserves are a little bit different than they are in the general fund. The general fund is discretionary money, so when you establish a reserve there, you want to make it very tightly controlled so that before anyone can use it, there are certain things that have to occur. In a utility fund, you need to be a little bit more flexible so that the, the utility managers are able to operate the fund in a sufficient, or operate the systems in a sufficient manner. Part of what we're trying to do here with this reserve proposal is to, to be able to protect these infrastructure assets of the city and to be able to have financial resources available in the event of some kind of economic downturn or a natural disaster or an infrastructure failure. If we have major infrastructure failures, such as, you know, a lift station and the sewer system goes, fails, or if we have water or sewer line failures that are large and extensive, we're going to need to have financial resources to address that. As part of our operations and our day-to-day management of the utilities, major maintenance is done all the time to try and prevent any kind of major catastrophe, but we need to be prepared if something were to occur. So there are several different types of, there are five different types of reserves in the utility fund, and each of them has a formula, and each of them has a purpose. The first one is a working capital or operating reserve, and it's based upon 120 days of operating of O and M expenses. And that's money you set aside if, for some reason, you don't have cash flow to cover your, your operational costs. You have this reserve to fall back on. And frequently, the only time that you would fall back on that is if you have some timing differences in the receipt of your revenues or if there's some downturn that occurs that we are not able to collect revenues. So we're prepared for any eventuality. The rate stabilization is used to cover unexpected decreases in revenues or increases in expenses and to try and level out any year-over-year rate volatility. Unlike the operating reserve, which, go back there for a minute, this reserve is something that would just be used by management as we are operating the, the utilities. This reserve here, because it affects rates and rates are approved by the council, if this was to be used, the council would be approving any use of this. The emergency capital reserve is used if, like I was saying before, if we had a major infrastructure failure and we needed funds to be able to address that failure, we would have some emergency capital set aside. The formulas, just a comment on the formulas that are in here establishing these reserves. Like here on operating, it's 120 days of operating M and O expenses. Here, it's a percentage of, excuse me, it's a percentage of revenues. Here, it is a percentage of depreciable assets. And then in debt service, the formula is one year of debt service funding set aside. As you probably are aware, we have three loans in the water and sewer funds. One was a loan for the water meters, and then we have two SRF loans. One was from 2009, and one was originally approved in 2014. And that one covered the major improvements that were just completed out there at the treatment plant. So this is setting aside that money. Once again, in the event, for some reason, our revenues fall off or we're unable to make the payment, we will have the money sitting there so we can make our payment. One thing that you don't want to do as a city is default on any loans, is it will affect your bond ratings, and it will affect your ability to get capital for future infrastructure and development. So you want to make sure you have that money set aside. Systems Improvement Capital, that is your major maintenance and your ongoing systems improvements. And this item is, is a much more fluid kind of reserve. It's established each year when we look at our, when we adopt our capital improvements budget. And what we're proposing is that the amount here would be anywhere from a one to five years of capital improvements projects, up to a maximum of $5 million. And that, of course, would be approved by the council as part of the CIP budget approval process. So summary, to look at, how does this impact us? The halfway down, there's a 63016 audited net position row. That is net position in governmental utilities, really just means equity or fund balance. It's assets minus liabilities. But for some reason, in government and fund accounting, they call it net position. Thank you, Gasby. So if we look at the first four reserve categories that we were talking about, the operating, the rate stabilization, emergency capital, and debt service, we see what those total reserves would be based upon the formulas. And if we subtract that reserve from our net position at 63016, and all of, the first three of those reserves are based upon audited financial statements. The fourth one, of course, is based upon what our debt service on the loans is requiring us to have. The available fund balance before our systems improvement capital, and that's the one that I talked about being fluid and adopted every year in the CIP budget process, is in the water fund, 2.4 million, and in the sewer fund, 6.2. And for purposes of the discussion, I entered the allowable, the maximum allowable improvements, systems improvement reserve of 5 million, just so that we can see what would that look like. You see a negative number there in the water fund, but it's, if we were to have a maximum of 5 million needed in systems improvements, and I'm pretty sure our capital budget is going to need 5 million in the next year. And in the sewer fund, there's a little bit of a remaining fund balance or net position. And that amount can, these numbers here in the sewer fund are, in the reserves in the sewer fund are numbers that are being calculated in the current cost-to-service study that's underway. And so any remaining funds, there's the ability to use those for rate stabilization or for other capital improvement projects and so forth. The numbers here also are only the operating funds, funds five and seven. The connection fee fund and the capital fund, those amounts are- The connection fee fund and the capital fund, those amounts are already restricted and reserved for specific use. So, do you have any questions for me?
I do have a couple of questions. On the, under the fiscal analysis, I'm just reading it from the, from the report, it says, additionally, reserves are considered in the cost-of-service studies in order to ensure that the service rates are set appropriately. Does that, does that mean that as a percentage of any of these rate studies, some, some certain amount or designated percentage would be a reserve just for reserves? Is that what that is getting at?
When we do the rate study, we will, these reserves will be set aside. They won't be used as available funding in the cost, in the cost-of-service study. What you do in a cost-of-service study is you start with a beginning balance, what is available, and then you figure out what are our maintenance, O and M cost, and what are our capital cost, and what are our debt service costs, and how much do we need to set our rates at? So these reserves are set apart, separate and apart from that calculation.
But I guess my point is, is you set the rate, as part of a rate-setting structure, is a portion of that designated for reserves, where in some cases you have 2%, in some cases you have 10%. They come from different fund sources, whether it's a rate payer, or connection fee, or whatever. There's a designated portion of that for reserves in the rate calculation.
I haven't looked at the rate model, so I can't specifically answer that, but I would say the likelihood is that these amounts will not change significantly year-over-year, unless we, you know, grow the systems, or our O and M increases, our operating capital's going to be relatively the same year-over-year, and our debt service is set, and so on. So I don't know, because I haven't looked at the rate model, the exact impact that they will have, and whether or not we will be collecting money for these reserves. My instinct would be probably not, because we're setting them aside now, and I don't think they will increase significantly over time.
My only concern there would be that if we're establishing a policy of establishing minimum reserves, they were not, in effect, triggering a rate increase in any particular area of the, of the five identified sources.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that we are, no.
Yeah, I could probably help philosophically with that question. These essentially are targets. If we have a downturn in revenue, or a regulatory unexpected impact, you would want to be using those reserves to buffer that.
Sure.
Well, that, of course, would draw down your reserves, and as we go through a budget process, we would look at that. Part of the, the cost-of-service study, you may recall, from the water rates, is they actually put some graphs up showing, over time, as we're ramping up rates, and we're, in that case, we were sort of transforming our rate structure from a primarily fixed to a primarily metered rate structure. They did a fund balance and a reserve analysis to make sure we didn't go negative at some point, as, as we were doing that transition. And with the sewer cost-of-service study, with some major capital costs in the outlook of the near term, they'll be doing similar, you know, if we propose, we had a financial impact report to you over the last couple of years, as we were doing this debt service financing of the improvements, and we did several projections of what debt service would look like, and council guidance and direction was, the preference would be to pick a rate model that eased the rates in over a period of five years. So that's essentially a dramatic form of rate stabilization, where it doesn't all happen at once. Well, that, we're now making payments that are probably greater than what we're actually collecting, and so we have to have some reserves going into that. We'll draw those down over the first five years, and then we'll begin to recover those reserves. So we'd be looking at all of that as part of the cost-of-service study, to make sure we don't go negative in the process.
Okay. And then I guess the last question, in the policy, it states that for purposes of the debt service, you'd have one of two options. One would be whatever the bond covenants require as a minimum reserve, or the amount due in the upcoming fiscal year, whichever is greater. So, and I'm not clear what we have here, do these numbers represent what is required by the bond covenant, or payments?
They do represent what is required by the bond covenants. Both SRF loans require a one-year reserve, and so these numbers are coming off of our amortization schedule, which might have been clarified if I had attached that to the, to the item.
I may not have seen it. Thank you.
Future projects that get alternate funding, depending on the perceived risk of the market, might have a different 1.25 requirement, or a one-and-a-half debt service coverage requirement. So the policy would allow for that.
Okay. That's good. That's all I have.
Go ahead.
So, Emily, we've had a reserve on, in these funds currently, correct? This is just making the policy?
When I look back through the records, what we've had, and what the finance department has been calculating as a reserve for the utility funds, was based on a 2003 reserve policy, when the resolution on that reserve policy only addressed general fund reserves. It did say in the staff report, however, that we would use, it said we will use the same formulas for the utility funds. And so the finance department has been using that same formula over these years, even though since 2003, even before I got here, the general fund reserve policy had already been amended. So what this really does is it allows us to have a formalized reserve policy for the utility funds, rather than a reference in a staff report.
Thank you.
So, are we trying to build up to this, or do you already have this floating around in the checking account?
I mean, is it? I'm not sure I would characterize it that way, but no, we do already have these monies available.
If you look at the audited net position after proposed reserves, in the middle of the chart there, you know, that's, that's showing the kind of cash we currently have available. So while we have a formal reserve policy, we know as operators, and as finance department staff, and as city manager, that we can't operate on a shoestring. We've got to have some fairly big reserves, and an example is, we've got a deep well project that'll be coming to you with a bid award in a few months ahead, that's going to be upwards of a $4 million project. Well, we don't want to have to go through a rate study every time you have a capital improvement, so we try to build reserves planning ahead for that five-year outlook.
Super. But the 5 million that you currently put in there might not end up being the actual number.
That's correct. I put that in there, that is the maximum.
That's the maximum that it could end up being.
It will depend on.
It will end up being less.
Depending on our capital improvement budget that we'll be presenting to you in a month or two.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Questions? What are we doing here? Okay, we need to adopt a resolution approving the utility funds cash reserve policy. Do I hear a motion?
Second. Two seconds.
Okay, wow, everybody, let's see, I guess we'd like to.
Ladies first.
Put that money in reserve. Councilmember Campion moved, Councilmember Hewer seconded. Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Approved, five to zero. Onto consider support for transportation funding bills, Senate Bill Number One, SB One, and Assembly Bill Number One, AB One.
This isn't a much bigger picture, I don't know what.
Good evening, Steve Winkler, Public Works Director, mayor and council members. Thank you for your attention to an important item that you might have been seeing on the news, that, and maybe seeing ads for and against, proposals to try to do something about the broken gas tax formula in California. And it's really a nationwide issue, with both state and federal dollars falling woefully short of what it takes. This is a photo that you might have seen before, at, back in November, we kind of gave you a report card on the state of our road system, and this was the cover slide, and that, that's a local Galt street, and this is an example of what happens when you don't have enough money to do preventive maintenance, and this road is now in a state where it'll take complete reconstruction to save this road. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So, we're, roads are kind of the taken-for-granted unsung heroes. You know, we don't rescue babies from burning buildings in public works, but this is an example of first responders need the roads too. And if they don't have water, they can't fight fires, they don't have roads, they can't get. And this is an actual photo, in Southern California, they had some washouts. I believe at the time, the fire engine was there, because they're having dramatic erosion on the shoulder, and it was undermining, and so they had parked there with their flashing lights on, and the weight of the fire truck got undermined, and unfortunately, they ended up in the gully. I don't know if anyone was injured, but it doesn't look like a good way to end your shift as a firefighter. But our roads are really important to California. So we did give you a snapshot of our report card in 2016, and these were some of the information we gave you back in November. Overall, state of California, our pavement condition index is in an at-risk rating of 65. 52 of 58 counties are in that at-risk or poor overall, which is a large majority of the state of California. Currently, statewide, we have about $2 billion in funding for our roadways. Based on needs assessments, it's estimated just to do status quo, keep it from getting any worse, and we're getting lots of complaints about potholes, that it would statewide would take almost double the current funding, and to dig out of that hole in a 10-year period is about a $7 billion figure, and I'm kind of giving you background to the bill that we're going to ask you to consider supporting tonight. And out of that same set of reports, studies have been done, and saying that on average, that for every vehicle in the state of California, the deteriorated roads are causing, on average, $800 per year in damage, front-end alignments, rims, tires, you know, other, other damage to vehicles, and as a direct result of damaging conditions or dangerous conditions of the state's roadways. That equates to about $67 a month, and I want you to remember that number, because when we talk about SB One tonight, we're going to come back to what that proposal looks like, related to the average cost of $67 a month for car owners. So, current estimates of the backlog in the state are $72 billion in the state highway system, a very similar amount for local streets and roads, local counties, cities, and special districts, and that, again, we are estimating that just to hold on to that backlog number, and not get any worse, we need to have additional $3.5 billion infused into it, and to eliminate that backlog over a 10-year period, we would need to have about $7 billion statewide infused into that. Now, that number is very similar, or very close, to what is actually being proposed by SB One. And locally here in Galt, we have an estimated pavement backlog, about $15 million, and that doesn't even include sidewalks and storm drainage systems and culverts, that's strictly our pavement maintenance. And currently, our discretionary available funding, after our capital projects and matching funds for those grant-type projects are netted out, we have about a half a million dollars a year, on average, and to maintain our current PCI pavement condition index, we would need about $3 million a year. So we're falling woefully short, and the only reason that our current pavement condition index is as high as it is, and we're in the poor category, is because a lot of the city is in the northeast area, and those are predominantly newer roads, so those are buoying up the average. But if you get on the west side of 99, in older town areas, we're probably more like we're in a failing range, like that first photo we showed you. So, yeah, overall, on average, we're kind of doing maybe, sort of, kind of, okay, but the reason that it's a little scary, as your public works manager, you've seen this graph before, is we're about to fall off that cliff, where costs, if we can maintain them up in that green band, for $2 to $4 a square yard, we can do preventive maintenance, flurry seals, cracked ceiling, chip seals, and, and trying to, you know, do pottle repairs, or prevent potholes from developing, I should say. But as you drop into that blue band, you'll notice the cost go up by five to 10 times, and that's where we are. We're, we're in that, we're about 62 overall in the city. Statewide, it's 65. But the whole state is about to fall off that cliff. And if you go into the yellow, all of a sudden, you start to, not only is it 10 times more expensive when you get to the blue, but then it doubles in each band thereafter, as you move to a failed state. And so it gets extremely expensive for the taxpayers, and we're actually digging ourselves into a hole that we are not going to be able to get out of, if we don't, in the very near term, do something about it. So last Wednesday, you started to hear press releases throughout the weekend, that the governor and the legislative leadership have gotten together and, and come up with a plan. And that plan is to, as it currently exists in SB One, and it was just amended yesterday, so these are the latest numbers, that currently proposing $52 billion over 10 years, which is about 5.2 billion a year. It'll be growing as they ramp in some of these proposals, but on average, about 5.2 billion a year over the next 10 years. That would, 15 billion of that would be directly to cities and counties, as local roads and streets support. That equates to about $10 a month to an average California motorist. Now, remember, that the cost from damage is averaging, anybody remember?
67.
$63 a month, on average. So this is investing $10 to save $60 for every motorist out there, every month. So when people get uneasy about raising gas taxes and diesel taxes, the cost to not doing that is much greater. So last Friday, SB One was amended, it was amended again yesterday, and introduced with that last Friday was ACA 12, that's an assembly constitutional amendment, that would build into the state constitution, if approved, guarantees and protections, the money can't be raided or borrowed and used for non-transportation purposes, which is the case with a lot of transportation funding, as the state has gone through tough economic times, they've borrowed and redirected funds away from transportation, is sort of the how did we get in this mess answer. So some of the funding reforms that are being proposed with SB One will be oversight and fiscal management tools. It's, it's gonna, if approved, as currently proposed, remove the CTC from under the Natural Resources Department, and make it an independent oversight, as it originally was intended by the, by the legislature when they created it. It will require reporting and transparency for both state and local agencies, with reports on what projects we funded with the additional funds, and assuring that we've had maintenance of effort, that we haven't, when we get the new money, we don't divert money away from our roads and use it for something else locally. There'd be an independent office of audits and investigations in Caltrans, in addition to the CTC, and, and it would also create some mitigation funding to help with, as we plan major capital projects, to try to get out of this hole that we're in, this backlog, it will streamline the ability to do environmental impact mitigation, and create a whole new program with some funding for that. Funding reforms included in the bill would require that complete streets become a permanent part of the state's plan, and that's sidewalks, and pedestrian, and bicycle lanes, and, and features that will provide traffic calming. It also will increase funding commitments to local and small disadvantaged businesses, and will require, and Caltrans actually come up with efficiency measures. How are they going to pay for all of that? Well, SB One proposes $706 million in one-time loan repayments, a 12-cent increase in the state excise taxes on gases, that'd be 12 cents per gallon on an excise tax. It would include an addition to vehicle registration fees, called a transportation improvement fee, that little chart on the right, it would depend on value, so this would be added to your annual registration, depending on the value of your vehicle. It would also include a 20-cent diesel excise tax, so trucks will be paying their way as well, and in addition, a 4% sales tax increase on diesel fuels. And it would also look to have zero-emission vehicles, electric fuels, pay their way. They currently are getting a free ride, because they don't pay for gas taxes. So this would add a $100 vehicle registration fee, beginning in 2022. It would also have some one-time allocations, paying back those $706 million in loans, instead of that money being deferred to general obligation bond payments, it'll be redirected back to state and local agencies. And then there will be annual allocations of a billion and a half for the state highway system, a billion and a half for local streets and roads, that self-help jurisdictions, such as City of Galt and Sacramento County, we have Measure K south of us, we have Measure A here in Sacramento County. Those are self-help measures that we, our voters have approved to help solve the problem, and there'd be an extra $200 million distributed to aid to local agencies that are doing that. And then they're bringing a new phrase, buzz a frame, is active transportation projects is a new thing that they're looking at, it includes smart, smart systems in pavement, that's when you could go on your Google Maps and see what traffic conditions are, you can get freeway signs that tell you how long it's going to take to get to your destination. They're also doing things with high occupancy vehicle lanes, and they're going to start requiring that we include these elements in our major arterials, et cetera. And there's some funding for state university systems to do research and offer training for public agency staff to do some of these things. They also are, as They also are, as you can see, I won't read the slide to you, but some earmarks for freight corridors, congested communities, transit gets a big injection, and public transportation, as well as some planning grant money so that cities and counties can help figure out some of these new active transportation and complete streets types of projects and how to get through the hoops. And then, there's money for bridges and culverts, we don't have a whole lot of those in Galt, and some money for congested freeway service patrol programs, that county has that, and for apprenticeship programs to try to get more workers trained to do some of the work that's got to be done. And there's a host of eligible things we can use it for, we can use it to match and leverage other state and federal grants, or SACOG grants, we can use it for safety projects, certainly road maintenance rehabilitation, rate separation projects, things like our quiet zone would have been an example of what we could do more of in the future, and the complete streets and active transportation purposes, bike-friendly, walk-friendly type communities, transit facilities, and some of the drainage structures associated with our roadways, as well as traffic controls. So, there are some requirements that come with the proposed bill, we have to have a maintenance of effort, any local funding that has historically been spent on roads must continue to be spent to be eligible to get those local pieces to Galt, and where practical and feasible, that we look at recycling opportunities, you know, recycled pavement products, advanced automotive technology support, as they're building smarter cars and maybe driverless cars in the future, they're going to start, well, what do cities need to do to support that infrastructure as, as a smart technology? So, they'll be making money available, then they'll put some teeth in, well, to get these grants, you need to jump through some of these hoops, and obviously, climate change is on the governor's radar screen, as well as the complete streets and apprenticeship programs. So, we're authorizing tonight that you, we're recommending that you authorize a city support, formal support, registering that with the various legislative bodies, and that we would then authorize the mayor and staff to send letters and make phone calls, and that staff input, if requested by the legislators, to come up and testify as to local projects and local needs, would be part of supporting that effort. And because bills do change, and they are changing as we speak, we would also ask that you authorize opposition to substantive amendments or gut and amend proposals that, after we've registered, our support would be detrimental to Galt, that we could withdraw that support if, all of a sudden, it became something that was not beneficial to our local situation. In closing, League of Cities is sponsoring a rally tomorrow at the state capitol, if anybody wanted to go and cheer for our roads, and the information is up there. With that, I'd entertain any questions you might have.
Questions, council?
Quick question, you said $200 million for self-help agencies, I am assuming that that money's going through STA to the agencies, is that correct?
This thing's been developed literally over the last four days, so we haven't done a full and complete analysis, League of Cities has got analysts that are trying to catch up with it. Usually what happens is Caltrans will go through a whole rulemaking process, and, you know, they'll take the revenue gladly, and then they'll make a bunch of hoops for us to jump through. So, we don't know exactly how these funds will be coming, and the amounts that I showed you as far as annual benefits will be ramped up, because some of these programs ramp up over several years, so we won't necessarily see it all in year one, but over, on an average of five years, we should see that, those amounts.
So, at this point, we don't have a formula as to how much we might receive?
We haven't got that far with the analysis or heard what, if any, rules are going to apply. It'll probably be some type of population-based formula within the counties that have it.
Thank you.
So, yesterday, I did listen in to the webinar that was presented by the League of Cities, and they're really asking for, this has been a multi-year project for them, they've been working on this for a number of years, to try to come to an agreement between the cities and the state and labor and everybody that, it does look like, if it went in its current form, that we'd get about $582,000 a year, correct?
Which would just about double our current discretionary.
Current allocation, yeah. So, I, they did make a point of saying that if anybody was concerned, that there was, none of this would be going to high-speed rail, so none of it would be going to the governor's projected high-speed rail, that was very important to the legislature, that none of it went toward that. But they did say that if we could call our legislators and let them know that we support it, because many of the legislators say that they don't hear from their cities, and so they don't, they're either on the fence, or, you know, they aren't real sure what to do, and they say that they don't hear from their cities. So, I think it's really important that our legislators hear from us, I mean, we have a crisis in California regarding roads, so I think it's great that they finally have come to some sort of agreement to do something regarding moving forward on it. So, I would really encourage the council to support the legislation and to, and for us to allow city staff to send the letters and call our legislators.
Did you want to read the recommended, anybody else, I'm sorry?
No, I don't have any questions.
Would you please read the recommended action, Donna? Let me get the amended report.
It's amazing.
I'm going to read the amended agenda report. Authorize city advocacy for the proposed transportation funding measure currently pending. Consideration in the California Legislature, known as Senate Bill Number One, SB one. Formally registering support and transmitting letters of support to the bill's authors, Galt elected representatives, and various approval committees within the legislature, and to express opposition to substantial changes that would be detrimental to Galt.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Councilmember Hewer and Vice Mayor Cruz, a call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Approved 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're at the city clerk's report.
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing, okay, comments by staff, we'll start with Emily. Okay, Chris? Eve?
I'd like to introduce a new member of our staff, this fine-looking, well-trimmed gentleman at the dais is Mark Clarkson with his new look, so I just wanted to make sure you knew who he was.
I thought you had a ponytail, don't you? No.
No, he goes nice military.
Wow, he's zowie.
And just continue to commend the City of Galt residents and businesses. In this past month, we are still hitting 30% conservation numbers, and that's over normal winter numbers, although, obviously, it's been a wet winter, so that helps, but we'll keep you updated as that moves forward.
Okay, Amy? Mark? Chief?
So, I just want to comment on a recent council meeting, there was a public comment, questions regarding the police department's involvement with enforcement of federal immigration laws. I think it's time to probably address those, it's been talked about quite a bit in the news, and so, it's time. Due to the recent federal orders concerning immigration have not changed how Galt Police Department operates.
Right.
We do not ask those we contact or arrest about their immigration status. The Galt Police Department only makes arrests based on crimes committed, not on immigration status, and the Galt Police Department does not notify Immigration or Customs Enforcement on any arrests made, and with respect to the question about custody, there are many crimes requiring that the alleged violator be booked into the county jail, felonies, some warrant arrests, and some misdemeanor offenses. But once they go into the county jail, they're under the control of the county sheriff, not under the Galt Police Department. I think that addresses all the concerns that were raised that day.
Yes. Very nice, concise answer, thank you very much. Jean?
I have one item, Mayor, I was contacted by the Consumer and Community Service District, and they'd like to have a meeting with two of our council members, we typically, on an annual basis, meet once or twice a year, so I'm, you know, asking council if there's two volunteers that, you know, can meet with the two board members of the Consumer and Community Service District.
Isn't there already the established committee? There is not?
No.
Yeah, it's a two-by-two.
I thought it was the two-by-two.
Yeah, it is.
It's informal, it was never formalized.
Oh.
Well, maybe it's nice to give somebody else a chance, I don't know, it's up to... Oh!
I have.
Oh, well, who would like to do it, anybody?
I'll continue.
Raise your hand. No, I'm just kidding.
I always think of informal, right, this is more of an informal.
Shortly after I was elected, I met with them, they asked to meet with me, but it wasn't...
It was probably just a meet and greet, correct? Okay.
I don't know that the two-by-two's met.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Has the two-by-two even met?
Yeah, it's met, several times.
I think last time, maybe 2010, it's been quite a while.
Yeah, we met, and last year informally, and I think it was Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Campion that we did meet.
Must have been very informal.
It was very informal, and that's what, how it's always been, it's just been informal, when they, you know, when the city or the CSD would like to meet, we just kind of go to our boards, we get, look for two volunteers, you know, that was my understanding.
Back to the original question, do we have any volunteers?
I'll volunteer.
Okay, so, let's let Paige do.
Paige, go for it.
Don't we need two of us?
Yeah, you only need two.
Okay, how about those two over there? You okay with that?
Councilmember Lamson, Councilmember Campion?
Yeah.
Thank you, we'll get with you and schedule a date.
Emily's our little schoolgirl that goes to all the meetings, so we got that. That's good, we're watching on TV and stuff. Okay, so, those two. Kimberly?
I have nothing, I've just been here about a month now, and meeting everybody, and a lot of great people here, a great town, so getting to know everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Kurt?
I don't have anything.
Paige?
Well, it's been a busy couple of weeks, we had kite day out at McFarland Ranch, which had the highest attendance I've ever seen, people were getting their kites all stuck together, and the highest mosquito ratio I've ever seen, so I may be calling tomorrow. And we had the youth commission met, they're going to meet one more time this year, and they had a wonderful art event that some of you guys attended, it was fantastic. We'll be selling pancakes at the extravaganza, so everyone, please come out to the extravaganza, and we're still taking parade entrance, put on your bonnet, you can enter in the parade, prizes, come on out, it's going to be a lot of fun.
Councilmember Hewer?
So, since we last met, the city manager, myself, met with the Cable Commission Executive Director and staff, Ms. Lau, it was really great, I think we had a really good conversation. One of the issues that came up is the PEG money, which is the money that has paid for a lot of the upgrades to our council chambers, and so, that now is up for consideration again, so Ms. Settles is working with the Cable Commission staff regarding, they're going to actually come out and evaluate, there's actually maybe an opportunity that we could, it wouldn't be televised, but that we could actually video, like Planning Commission meetings, that there are some, there is the opportunity to be able to do that, so they have a lot of ideas about what they could do, so it was really informative, and then, after that, we did meet with, we also met with County Supervisor Donna Toley regarding a number of issues, mostly regarding the grant, the grant. Otherwise, I attended the Neighborhood Watch Regional Meeting, as did council, two of the other council members, so that was good, I encouraged the community to come out, it was a really great conversation, I wanted to commend the chief, I think you were kind of put on the hot spot regarding the homeless in, the homeless communities, individuals that live here in Galt, and, you know, I really commend the police department for the compassion to these individuals and working with those individuals, I think it, in your comments, it really showed how much you are aware that it's not just an issue of homelessness, it's also an issue, you know, humanity, and so, I was, I was really pleased of your response to the questions and your presentation, so I really appreciate that, I think that, you know, even though we have a very small population of homeless individuals, I think as a community, we need to have compassion for the fact that there is a housing crisis, and if you spend any time looking at what's happening in the city of Sacramento and the county of Sacramento, and how they're trying to deal with the issue, you know, I, at some point, I would, you know, I really afterwards did a lot of thinking on the issue, and the fact that we don't have a social services that's outreaching our homeless population, and that it does fall so much to law enforcement, and that maybe at some point, we need to be talking to the county about providing some sort of assistance to our police department in, in dealing with, dealing with the issue and getting people treatment, so, thank you.
First, I'd like to say thank you for, I'm sorry.
We don't deal with treatment, okay, go ahead.
I just want to say thanks for those that came out, and the community that came out, I mean, those events are valuable to our city, and the second thing on the homeless is, it really is a community and a social issue, and it's, the police department does a really great job of going out and meeting with the folks that are out there, and we know who they are, and we try to provide them services and try to convince them, because a lot of times, they don't want the services or they don't accept the services, and so, but trying to stay on top of it so that we don't ever have to respond out when they're in some sort of mental crisis, which we've all seen sometimes that don't, that doesn't really work out very well, so, because of the efforts of the police department, going out there and doing that every single day, I think we're able to help keep those relationships with those folks, which really does help when we go out there, when they are having some sort of issue.
I think the compassion that they show is really outstanding, because I don't think you see that in a lot of communities, and I think they, you know, I think our, our law enforcement are doing a great job, and I think part of that comes from you and your compassion.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that.
Okay, so, I'm going to pat our organization on the back, South County Services, we do work with a lot of the homeless, we see them all the time, we know who they are, and we do provide some services for them, we give them food, we give them clothing, and we help them get places if they need to, and we'll refer them to other places also, so, there is an organization that does help, and that would be South County Services.
Yeah, but, one of the issues about housing, you know, is that there is, I mean, you provide a lot of the services, and I greatly appreciate what South County Services does, but it is a housing crisis, I mean, it is, it is an issue about where people live.
Yeah, it's not just for homeless people, it's a housing crisis very big here in Galt, getting into a house, an apartment.
Can I, can I also add that I appreciate Mr. Winkler being at the community meeting, and normally shy and reserved, he jumped right up when a question came up for Mr. Arias, and took the bull by the horns and answered all that, we appreciate you being there and doing that for us.
Okay, Council, Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yeah, I did just want to report back on a couple of meetings I just came back from. The Land Use Committee within SACOG, the subcommittee within SACOG, just recently has gone through the process of updating what they call the MTPSCS, which is a long, drawn-out way of saying Metropolitan Transit Plan, Sustained Community Strategies, say that 10 times fast. What it boils down to is, it maintains where we're at as far as our transportation within the communities in Sacramento region, covers Galt, Folsom, come on, Mark.
Rancho.
Rancho, thank you, Elk Grove. And what they do is periodically, every three to four years, they'll go back through, and they'll update it to make changes according to what's going on within the community. The biggest ones being, and this ties into SB one, is that for the last, oh goodness, as was said, about a year and a half, they've been pushing very hard for SB one and AB one, and it's very nice to see that it's, it's coming to fruition. The other portion of that is the board meeting itself, this tags on with SB one, is that we're also going through the greenhouse gas reduction, that has a direct effect on as far as SB 375, a lot of the monies will be used towards that as well. Other than that, on a positive note, May is Bike Month, and I know that it's April, but start gearing up, it's going to be a big push, especially with our grant regarding our new bike paths coming up.
Cool.
That's all I have.
Bike safety.
Bike safety.
Right.
The bike rodeo.
Where's that going to be?
Mayor, if we could jump in there, Chief has some information on bike safety.
Okay.
So, on May 6th, in conjunction with the food truck event, we're also going to be having a bike rodeo. TJ Katati's been working really hard to gather some items for that and prizes, but this is a initiative by two students at Liberty Ranch High School for the graduate project, and they wanted to do something for the community, so I commend both of them for their efforts and working with TJ, and I think partnering up with the food truck event is really going to build a draw downtown to, for that event, too, plus be a great... to build a draw downtown to, for that event, too, plus be a great event for the community.
Thank you.
Can you tell the community about bike registration, that the opportunity's out there to register bikes?
Absolutely.
I think a lot of the community doesn't, isn't aware that we do have a bike registration program, and that will they be registering bikes at the event?
We will have bike registration out there, too, in the forums, so the bike registration is a free service that Galt Police Department provides, where you can register your bicycle. It, it's his own identification number, there's a, there's a serial number on the bike, we register that into our system, because bike theft is one of the number-one theft in America, it's a, it's a million-dollar, billion-dollar industry on stolen bikes and around the nation. And so what typically happens is, is that when a bike is stolen, we have no way of knowing who the owner is. I couldn't tell you what the, what the registration number of mine bike is when I first bought it, I write all my serial numbers down as a matter of practice, but normally, when people do that, they don't, they don't register. Well, in this case, when an officer goes out and finds what they perceive to be a stolen bike, they can run that number through our system, and we can automatically tell who's it, it's kind of like a license plate or a vehicle registration on your car. So it was free of charge, there's forms inside, in the police department, and then whenever we have a community event, those forms are brought out to our booths.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have nothing. We are going to adjourn the regular session, and we're going to reopen the closed session, so that's it for the regular session.